All right. Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Steve, will you please call the roll?
Okay. Councilman Calcutta?
Here.
Councilman Rossini?
Here.
Mayor President?
Present.
Mayor Miles?
Present. Thank you. Okay, today I will ask Councilman Rossini to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
It's my honor. Everybody, please stand, place your right hand over your heart, face the flag, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Thank you.
Thank you. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcome you to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. Speaker cards can be found outside the entrance to city council chambers. Speakers will be called on individually during the public comment section of the item they wish to speak on. Speakers will be limited to a time period of three minutes. Speakers were also able to submit comments in writing by 3:00 PM today. Those comments will be read aloud during the public comment section of the item. First, we're going to start with our presentations, and I believe we have a presentation on SB 1383 from Republic. Hi, welcome.
My name is Isabella Viegas. I'm a recycling coordinator with Republic Services, and I'm going to be giving...
Can you check to see if your microphone is on? To push the button, there should be a green light.
Oh.
There, thank you.
Okay, perfect. So, good evening. My name is Isabella Viegas. I'm a recycling coordinator with Republic Services. I'm going to be talking briefly about SB 1383. And just for clarification, it's limited to three minutes?
Not for you, no.
Oh, it's 15.
For the public comment.
Oh, okay.
For our scheduled presentation.
Okay, perfect. Perfect. I was just checking. So, let's move on to the first slide. So, this is just a little agenda. We have an introduction. I'm going to be talking about current state mandates that are in place right now, what their SB 1383 is, and a little bit information on that, resources, and questions at the So, let me pull it up. So, currently, for SB 1383, this requires, simply it requires organic waste to be diverted 75% by the year 2025, and this is based off of the... This is based off of the 2014 numbers. Currently, we have AB 1826, which pertains to organic waste. Any business with two cubic yards of solid waste and 20 gallons of organic waste or more are required to divert organic material from the landfill, meaning they must have some type of organic recycling program in place. We have AB 827. This one requires limited service businesses to provide organics and recycling receptables for customer use. So, these are, for example, like Panera Bread, you'll see they have the different sections inside of their restaurants where you can throw, like, paper, plastic. They have it, like, separated, so that's what this law requires. We also have AB 341. This one has been around since 2014. Any business with four cubic yards or more of solid waste are required to have some type of recycling program in place and divert recyclables from the landfill. A little introduction about SB 1383. This is just a little bit of background. Organic waste, this came about because organic waste is the largest waste stream in the that is going to the landfill. So, this creates a lot of pollution, and California came about and said, "We need to do something about this." And there's a lot of different things that go into organic waste, so we have a little breakdown of what is considered organic waste. We have paper, food, lumber, other organics, and non-organic waste. And they also want to address food insecurity, so that's a very important part that comes into 1383. So, they have some facts right there. One in eight Californians and one in five children are food insecure. And this is just a little timeline. So, by 2020, which passed, which just passed, we needed to reach, California as a whole needed to reach 50% reduction from the landfill of organic materials, and this was not reached. So, the next milestone is 2025 to reach 75% reduction of organic materials. So, in order to reach that goal, they're creating regulations that take effect 2020, so beginning of next year, there's stricter regulations that are going to be in effect to help reach this goal. Go ahead. So, how are we going to reach this goal together? The jurisdiction has several responsibilities that are outlined in SB 1383. Some of these, and they're all listed right here, so, provide organic collection services to all residents and businesses. Establish edible food recovery program. Conduct education and outreach to community. Procure recyclables and recovered organic products. Secure access and recycling and edible food recovery capacity. And monitor compliance and conduct enforcement. Areas of compliance, so, we have, it's not just one certain department that is responsible for all of this. Every, every, like, it's just every local department plays a role in SB 1383, so we have everything connected. Right here, we have public parks, public works, environmental health, public transportation, city council, board of supervisors, city manager, finance and legal, purchasing, because together, it's not just, it doesn't fall on one department, it falls on many to reach compliance. Now, for the city, there's quite a list of things that you need to be in compliance with. You need to have collection and processing, edible food recovery, ordinances and policies, enforcement, and penalties, education and outreach, record keeping, and reporting, procurement requirements, and capacity planning. And you can see, this list is quite extensive, and that's where the different departments would come into play. Here's just a few links to CalRecycle and their resources. Next. We do, Republic Services does have a partnership with Abound Food Care, so this is a resource that you can use as well. They recover food and distribute it. They do so many different things. Here are just listed for food resource recovery, food donation, emergency food management, and medically tailored meals. We do have some helpful links, but before I end, I just wanted to mention that Redden and Tucker Attorney Patrick Munoz is working with, working on ordinance, which will support the audit and compliance requirements. We will be having our staff audit a certain number of containers per year to be in compliance with the law, and the ordinance will support non-compliance initiative. And the food will be going into the yard waste. So, for residential, for residents, the food will be going into yard, the yard waste container, and residents will be receiving literature, including a label for the container, so there's no confusion regarding what will be going into the yard waste container. And then, the last one. That concludes my presentation.
So, I can add real quick. One of the issues that we have to come back with is an implementation plan. We're working, as she said, Patrick Munoz is working with Ratan and Tucker for us, with Republic. The issue did come up, but initially, they thought they might have to have a separate container, so they're working through this. Every city has kind of got issues they're working through. We're very similar to a lot of the, you know, Yorba Linda and some of the other cities, but there is potential costs to hear, and that's what we're working, that's one of the issues. So, the implementation plan has to address that. Republic will have to separate those substances, et cetera, like you're saying. So, that's going to be a question, and we're going to work through that, what that means. And the issue is not an issue of Republic, the issue is they're applying to a state mandate. So, that's, it's important to know, this isn't Republic asking for an increase, it's the state mandating services that cost money, and Republic is asking for, is going to be asking for coverage of those. And what that dollar amount is, we don't have anything, but we expect by the fall that you'll have an ordinance that will allow us to be in compliance, et cetera. The important thing, too, is there are financial implications. The state has the ability to fine you if you don't comply, so that's an issue, just like everything else, the state has the opportunity to do that. So, this is, this is something that all of us are grappling with and everything. Typically, other cities have different advantages because they have a lot more commercial than we do. We're a lot residential, so we're, we've got sort of a big issue there, and how we deal with that, because we, the food waste and residential, and how do you deal with a percentage of waste? It doesn't take, you know, the, those percentages that she talked about stay consistent for city by city. You don't get to adjust them because you have larger residential or whatever. You still have to, you know, get X amount of diversion and those kinds of things. So, it's a challenge for us, because right now, we have three containers per residential, and how do you, how do you, and those are recyclables, your regular waste, and then the green waste. So, what she's saying is, we've got to figure out how to do that, and our preference is not to put a fourth container out there, because we'll end up having just streetfuls of containers. So, that's our goal. And then, the other issue is how Republic is dealing with it. They have, you know, there's an issue about how they have to deal with it. So, you know, they've got to deal with it internally, because it has to go somewhere. So, there's a lot to this. It's a, it's a very complicated type of thing, but we expect in the fall, for Patrick, who's worked with us, and you've obviously all met him before, he's working with us on that, and he's working, representing several cities with Republic. And so, we're all sort of grappling with the same sort of concept. We're very similar to Yorba Linda because of residential. We have a very high green waste volume, as it is, because of our large properties. So, if you're using the green waste containers for a lot of green waste, then guess what? You don't have a lot of room for food, et cetera, in there. Kind of is what it is. We'll work through it, but it's another mandate that we're all trying to deal with. And we wanted you to kind of get at least a sense of it, so we asked Republic. They haven't, they don't have a full plan for us yet, but they expect to have one again this summer, that we can start working at staff level and get to the council in the fall.
Thank you. Ms. Viegas, thank you very much. Council, do we have any questions?
No questions, just a comment. I would hope, and obviously, Republic is looking down the road to potentially get some cost diversion or reimbursement for extra effort that they're putting forth due to the state mandate. But I would, I would ask, and I think it's critically important, and hopefully, Republic and all businesses within this industry are employing technology at a much greater level than they have in the past, and relying less upon manpower because the, or personnel, I should say, because technology's come a long way in identifying what is what you're seeing. I've recently been asked to look at a different technology and invest in something, and it's amazing what computers can pick up now, and I would hope that those types of things are being looked into and not just passing the buck onto the ratepayer, the customer in the end, because we do have large yards, but we have very few people. So, as a city, I guess, I know that they do it per household, but I don't think we're, we're going to make that much more of an impact even with this. So, I would just hope that they're very sensitive to the fact that our residents, in some cases, not in all cases, but in some cases, cannot afford an increase year after year after year after year when the state is trying to flex their environmental muscles. It has significant local impacts on our seniors, and I would hope that Republic is keeping that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? I have a question. So, when you talk about that food recovery program, and I think you mentioned the food would go, the plan is for it to go into the yard waste containers, is that also the green waste containers?
Yes, it would be the green waste.
Okay. And then, I don't know if you can touch on this or not. If not, it's perfectly okay, but can you kind of describe a little bit with that food recovery program, how that works? Because typically, if I throw food away, it's spoiled, and nobody's going to want to recover it.
Yes. The food recovery program from Abound Food Care is mainly for commercial businesses, not residential.
Okay, all right.
We're actually using those, those, what's it, OC?
Waste not OC is now called Abound Food Care.
Those are working with some of our, like, restaurants here, et cetera.
Okay.
So, we're working with that. Ralph's has already got their own program. They're separate from Republic. They don't get picked up by Republic.
Okay.
Interestingly enough, they have their own contract. So, but the, but the restaurants are already working on that. So, the issue is residential food waste, is there, that's the challenge that we've got to deal with.
And that's what can't, that's what you're trying to decrease by 75%?
Yes.
That landfill, right? So, what are you going to do with it?
We're working on a program.
Yeah, I can actually add something. I was going to bring it up a little bit later on, but I'll toss in that during our strategic planning over at OC SAN, we did have a discussion, myself, a couple of the other directors brought this to the general manager, and he's come back. They're working on a program to recover waste and take it to OC SAN, and we'll have details that'll go out to the city with that, and I'll try to elucidate more on that as the program takes more shape.
Basically, what the program requires is that the food waste will be homogenized, so best way to describe it, and it'll be added to the digestors at the sanitation district's treatment facility, and it'll be used to generate methane, which, and then the sanitation district burns the, or uses the methane for generating electricity in their turbines down at the plant. And the, currently, the sanitation district generates about 2/3 of the electricity needed to run the whole treatment plant, and this will augment, the additional food waste or methane generated from the food waste will augment that, so it'll be put to a positive use.
It's a program that OC SAN used to run, and it's called the Compost Buyback Program, so look out for that.
Thank you. Okay. There's no other questions. Thank you so much for your time and for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another presentation. It's actually the law enforcement appreciation proclamation, and I specifically wanted to have this proclamation so that the city could show support for our law enforcement and honor the law enforcement with this proclamation. So, I'm going to go ahead and read it and then present it to Sergeant Feeley, and hopefully we can take a group picture. So, "Public safety is one of the most important priorities of local government. There are more than 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of our own local law enforcement agencies, the Orange County Sheriff's Department, and police departments of Anaheim, Brea, Buena Park, Costa Mesa, Cypress, Cal State University Fullerton, Dana Point, Fountain Valley, Fullerton, Garden Grove, Huntington Beach, Irvine, La Habra, La Palma, Laguna Beach, Los Alamos, Newport Beach, Orange, Placentia, Santa Ana, Seal Beach, Tustin, UCI, Westminster, and Yorba Linda. The city of Villa Park recognizes the extraordinary service and sacrifice of the law enforcement officers who keep our communities safe, and we would like to extend a warm welcome to all local law enforcement personnel to the city for both professional and/or personal matters. The city of Villa Park would like to acknowledge and show appreciation to the brave men and women who serve and protect our neighborhoods, our families, and our schools. Now, therefore, it be resolved, we do hereby proclaim that the city of, the city council of the city of Villa Park honors and supports all law enforcement officers for their service and dedication, and declares Villa Park a law enforcement-friendly city with this proclamation." So, we wanted to present this to you, and if we could...
Maybe we can get a picture of the council with the sergeant?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Now, we're going to get our presentation, our update, from Orange County Sheriff and Sergeant Feeley. That's you again. Welcome.
There we go. Okay. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I apologize, Gary, your last-minute meeting came up that Lieutenant, or excuse me, Captain Knutson had to attend over in Rossmore, so. But I'll be giving you the Villa Park service and activity for the month of May of 2021. We have an analysis on here, and just with the summer approaching, the Sheriff's Department wanted to remind everybody in the community to practice safe bicycle safety rules, wearing helmets at all times, reducing the risk of serious injury in bike accidents and crashes, and also to remember to bike with traffic and never against it. Riding against traffic is unsafe because drivers entering the road rarely look right for oncoming traffic. So, please remember to follow those rules, and your summer will be a much better experience, hopefully. For the month of May of 2021, we had a total number of calls of service of 327. There were actually only two criminal incidents of note, which is fantastic, and there were two burglaries, one a residential burglary where no items were taken, and one, another burglary where there was a total loss of $1,000. So, that's very good. I think that's a testament to some of your constituents here and residents in the city calling in and making, making those notifications to us when, when they see something that is a little bit out of place, so. We did have some traffic citation increases, I think, over the last month. We had, it was like about 23 that were issued by patrol deputies that work here, and with Steve Franks, Captain Knutson's been working on a little bit of enhanced traffic enforcement here as well, and we had an additional 24 citations for a total of 47. So, I think that, that traffic initiative is working really well. Did have a few traffic collisions over the past month. There were two hit-and-runs of parked vehicles, one on Santiago and Wanda, and one on Collins. And our traffic collision board and the traffic office is currently working on those. And then, we had three other traffic collisions in the city. Of note, they, all three, or excuse me, three of the four were actually off of Center Drive, so maybe we can certainly talk to the motor officer to kind of step up his enforcement on Center Drive due to that. Fortunately, they were all minor injuries and/or no injuries, just a couple, couple of dings and dents on some cars. And that concludes my report.
I would just like to add, too, real quickly, that I know we've received a few phone calls. The people are noticing, when did we get a motorcycle patrol in the city? So, they're visible now, and they issued 24-some-odd tickets. So, if he lights up his lights behind you, you've done something wrong, and I would encourage you not to drive wild in Villa Park, I would say, because with 48 tickets over 30 days, you can imagine there's a ticket a day at least. Somebody's getting one, and hopefully, that's not going to be yours. If you're driving safe, you don't have to worry, and there's no problem. But nobody has complained about it, and they all welcome the opportunity to have increased enforcement in the city. So, we're very fortunate, the sheriff's, and the sergeant's doing a great job. I think some of you have met him. He's really a veteran guy.
Yes.
And he knows what he's doing, but he's going to ticket you if he pulls you over. So, just be forewarned.
Thank you. And the resident at Center and Taft, I can give you the specific resident address, but he's expressed interest in the officer is more than welcome to use his driveway.
Center and Taft?
Yes.
Have somebody talk to you about that.
Yeah.
Taft is a raceway.
So, any comments or questions?
Just two things along the lines of bicycle safety. I think it's just important to remind parents and even some adults that wear a helmet, wear a helmet properly. Make sure it's not just dangling over your head. It's properly secured and it's fitted, so it stays on your head and it does its job. God forbid you're involved in a collision. Second thing is cycling under the influence. Per California Vehicle Code, Section 2120.5, which is a misdemeanor, you can be punished for literally riding a bicycle under the influence. So, please keep that in mind. It's seldomly enforced. I've seen it a few times in my career, but it is out there. And as things heat up, we all tend to enjoy an adult beverage, hopefully not more than one if we're riding a bicycle or driving a car, and just being responsible. So, just a reminder. Thank you.
Yes.
Quick question. I know there was mention last month about the number of tickets that were for people not living in Villa Park. Are we tracking that at all? Are we, is there a way to see statistics on...
I don't, I don't have the number, but the captain had mentioned to me that the large, overwhelmingly large majority of tickets are coming from non-Villa Park residents. And that's not something that when they pull them over, they know. They just pull them over and ticket them, and they see their license, and they're people who are traveling through, so.
Is that something that we can track or that we can...
They are tracking. I just don't have that available.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that availability either, but that's certainly something that we, we can track. And I mean, as Cotella goes, even on my way home, I actually come down Cotella, and then I go up through Cannon and all those other roads to get through and around the 91, because it's a little bit of a mess. So, there's, there's going to be plenty of people that are doing that, especially, you know, in the mornings and in those high-traffic times, so. And that's most likely why we've seen an uptick in the amount of citations, right? Because if they are doing that, it's because they're either running late or whatever it is, and they're cranking through the neighborhoods, and that's, that's where they're getting those tickets. So, hopefully, the, the additional enforcement will not only encourage them to slow down, but maybe even choose a different path through a different city and not coming through Villa Park.
We'll track that report next council meeting.
I appreciate that. I've had several people ask, so it is one of those things that if it's brought up, or people are going to want to know.
Yeah.
How's that impacting us? Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, you mentioned that in the course of a month, you had 23 citations issued by the patrol deputies, and the motor was 24. The motor is only there for a handful of hours every month.
Correct.
But issues as many tickets as the deputies. Is, can the deputies be encouraged to also keep an eye out for speeders and people with run stop signs and so forth?
Oh, yes, of course. The deputies are always doing that, but you have to understand, they also have the additional responsibility of checking parks and going to calls for service and things like that, that the motor officer is specifically here for traffic enforcement, and that's it. So, the other deputies are also assisting out at the school with, you know, maybe some of the summer school issues or something like that that's happening, or during the school year, they're assisting out at the school with, with your school resource officer. So, there are other things that the patrol deputies are doing, but I assure you, they are certainly paying attention and making sure they are doing some traffic enforcement as well.
Yeah, just even considering that, just the, when you look at the number of hours, you know, the deputies are always here.
Right.
It's 21 hours a day. There are officers here in town or deputy, and the motor is only here for 10 hours a month?
Eight.
Eight, eight hours.
You know, we, and I get frequent complaints and a half for years, as long as I've lived here in Villa Park, about the speeding and, you know, running stop signs and so forth in the city. So, it seems like it'd be kind of easy for the patrol deputies to pick up a few more.
Okay. Well, I can, I can certainly encourage that, but I, like I said, I think they are, they are certainly doing that, and we've seen an increase in what the patrol deputies have been writing over the past couple of months, and we've been encouraging that more and more. So, we will, we will let them know of your concerns.
So, I would also, the captain and I've had this discussion, and one of his concerns is that the presence of the, you know, you don't want a patrol officer sitting on 15 minutes of ticket time when he's rolling the streets, because that's, we had two incidents of crime over the last month. So, the presence of a black and white rolling is really valuable, and that's what, we only have one officer in the city at a time. So, that's one of the things, so I've said to him, but, but if you look at it, the numbers have increased in their number of tickets as we've placed, the captains pushed more for the patrol officers to pick... on 15 minutes of ticket time when he's rolling the streets, because that's, we had two incidents of crime over the last month, so, the presence of a black and white rolling is really valuable, and that's what, we only have one officer in the city at a time, so that's one of the things, so I've said to him, but, but if you look at it, the numbers have increased in their number of tickets, as we placed, the captains pushed more for the, uh, patrol officers to pick up tickets, but, um, like I say, so I think there's, um, um, I think there's a, a real balance that they're trying to keep for the patrol officers, whereas the, the traffic officer, he's, I don't want to say what they nickname him, but, he's, he's out to get tickets, he's out to enforce the traffic, so, but I think your point's well taken, and the officer see thing, but they could be in here dealing with kids and the, you know, or whatever, so their, their time gets consumed pretty fast and, and resolving the issue, so, there's kind of a balance and stuff, but that they have, the, the, in, I think you brought this up before, the, and the captain sends it to do it, and he has encouraged, I know that he's encouraged the deputies to cite, at, at least pull over and make a point where he sees something.
Just as a counterpoint, I know it's a valid point, but I would mu, much rather than be rolling and be keeping our crime stats down than issuing tickets, I know that the traffic is a, the speeding and some of those are a problem, but I, I think the impact to the whole city of having them out there rolling and not looking specifically at traffic tickets all the time is, uh, very valuable, so I would say, you're doing great.
Well, thank you, and we, we also do actually keep track of how many miles people drive and everything else, so, I actually have an account of how many miles is being driven in this city as well, so, um, those are a little bit lagging behind just because of the, the logistics of, of inputting all that information, but all of that has also increased as well, so, we have more people driving around, more people doing everything they possibly can to make this a, a safer place to, to work and live and everything else.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
Or maybe if you could, because, you know, on the topic of bikes and summer, uh, so, so what is the law requ, as far as helmets go with bikes and children?
Well, all children are, are required by law to have a, to have a helmet and protective equipment, I, I believe the helmet is mandatory and the other protective equipment is optional.
Up until they're 18?
Up until they're 18.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, and then, um, and my son is going to be listening to this, and then, um, how about those electric scooters?
The electric scooters fall under, under that, that requirement as well.
Okay, and?
And even, even I believe Razor scooters, uh, skateboards, all, all those things.
The, the one wheel thing, all that, right?
Hmm, yes ma'am.
Okay, and, um, uh, are, are you allowed to ride the electric scooter on a sidewalk, or does it have to be in the street?
It does not have to be in the street, it can be on the sidewalk, um, just based on the fact that you certainly wouldn't want a 10-year-old riding in the bike lane on the, on the street, so, the sidewalks are, are meant, the, the primary purposes, of course, for walking and things like that, um, but you are going to allow, you, you, we do allow and, and the law allows for bike riding and scooter riding and things of that nature on the sidewalks.
Okay, that was it, thank you. Nothing else? Yeah, that's it, thank you. All right, Chief Hunter, you're next, Orange County Fire Authority.
Before he starts, I want to mention that the chief has graciously got us the, uh, fire truck that will be leading our Fourth of July parade on July 4th, the morning of July 4th, so.
Yes.
Engine 23 will be out there in force over at the high school, so, for those residents who missed it last year, they'll want to make a point of getting out this year, and I want to thank the Fire Authority in advance, and Chief Hunter didn't even, didn't even hesitate when I called him, he was, yep, yeah, no problem, when, when do you want them? So, I, I appreciate it, and I wanted to thank you up in advance.
Oh, no problem, no problem. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, um, this report is from the last meeting, uh, May 25th, we were dispatched to 29 incidents within the city of Villa Park, none of those incidents were significant as far as fires, vegetation fires or structure fires, the majority of these incidents were medical aids and traffic collisions. What I want to touch on this evening is fire season, we're in fire season. We've had dry fuels, increased temperatures, if you look at the hills, whether you go to Silverado Canyon, you're driving down the 91, you look at Yorba Linda, it doesn't even look like fires even occurred last year, the vegetation's already starting to grow back, throughout the state of California, there's been numerous vegetation fires, um, we had one here in Orange County last week, an 11-acre fire, and there's a lot of fires that have occurred in our adjacent, um, counties, with Riverside County as well as San Diego County. The Orange County Fire Authority has been preparing and training our firefighters, our dispatchers, as well as our support staff in preparation for fire season, we've done refresher training, we've gone over our strategy and tactics, we've gone over safety, we've gone over hose lays, as well as pre-planning, and defensible space projects have been completed. Two weeks ago, a bunch of our units, resources, overhead personnel attended fire school at Camp Pinleton, which is a great opportunity to practice firefighter, wildland and vegetation fire, strategy and tactics. I want to remind the citizens that we need their help, it's a partnership, we need their help by providing us with early recognition and reporting, if you see smoke, please identify the location and call 911 immediately. Be prepared to receive information about incidents if you're at home or you're concerned about what's going on, this information's going to come from the city of Villa Park, the city you may live in, the Orange County Fire Authority, the sheriffs, as well as the county, and your local news network, have a plan in place ahead of time with RSG, which stands for Ready, Set, Go. Identify a meeting location for your family and make sure that that's in a safe area. Uh, we have additional information on our website at ocfa.org, and there's information on preparing your house, as well as your evacuation plan, RSG, and some of the things to look out for when you do have to access 911 to help us out, and that's all I have in the report, and available for any questions.
Thank you, Council, questions, comments? Yep, well, thank you for everything you do, and be safe, I know it's coming into fire season and, um, and Fourth of July with fireworks and stuff, so, um, you know, we're praying for you, I hope it's a season that's uneventful.
Starting uneventful, but, we'll see how it ends.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will review comments from, uh, members of the public to address any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law, we will also be reviewing public comments on each agenda item, um, there's nobody in the gallery for public comment, but, uh, did anybody write in, or any, um, phone calls or emails?
No, we've received nothing, thank you.
Okay. Then at this time, we'll continue on with the public hearing, so, um, we'll move into our agendaized public hearings, our first hearing is a review to waive reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda, uh, staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, this is the regular monthly reading we do of the first, I mean, sorry, the regular first ordinance, um, the waiving of reading of resolutions, et cetera, to expedite the meeting, uh, in each case, and we'd recommend approval.
And, okay, and there's, seeing no one's here, no public comment on this item?
No.
Council, any questions, comments?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, oh no, we get to vote.
You can vote on the machine, so we're good to go, so these are, record your votes. So the pass is by a 4-0 vote.
Thank you. Next public hearing, uh, is a consideration of the fiscal year 2021-22 operating budget and seven-year capital improvement program appropriating revenue and establishing the appropriations limit for fiscal year 2021-22, and amending the salaries and benefits resolution. I'm opening the hearing, staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, this is the fiscal year 21-22 City Villa Park budget, operating budget and capital, the seven-year capital improvement program, basically, it is as of July 1st, uh, a week, next week, we'll be opening up, uh, our next fiscal year, closing out, uh, 2021, um, this, you'll recall, we had a budget study session April 5th, and then again on May 3rd, we had our second budget session, this is the culmination of those and the presentation of the package, our budget will, uh, have total estimated revenues of 5.3 approximate million, expenditures of 5.9, we use approximately 600,000 of, of available, uh, fund balance, the, undesigned, just monies that carry, get, get carried forward, we will still have a, a reserve balance of one point, almost $2 million, uh, next year's projects, um, next year's budget reflects, uh, consistent with the current programs and priorities of the Council, we will be beginning our new capital project for, uh, our street project, so we'll be coming forward with a list of streets later this year, uh, and then secondarily, we will be doing a very major, uh, sewer project, uh, that we have, a sewer assessment, everyone gets on project, so we'll be doing a, a $900,000 project there, uh, so, all in all, I think our budget, uh, is a, we, we are structurally very balanced and in good shape, this year we've included, um, and to Jim Gorszo's credit, our finance director, he's created a, a five-year projection, um, that is on page 41, 40, 41 of the budget, when you, if you get a chance, it's, it's a new feature this year, gives us a long term, so if anyone's doubting that we're structurally balanced, you can see that, the issue is always going to be, as it is always, capital projects, and we dictate our capital projects, what we do based on what our available funding is, so, that's sort of what pushes us back and forth, so, we had, that has to change over the years, so, we're in very good shape, uh, GFOA says keep approximately, um, uh, three months worth of, uh, anywhere from three to six months of reserve revenue available, cash, we have that, uh, we're in good shape, we're putting aside money, we'll be over 80%, approximately 80% funded in our unfunded pension liability, which is very strong, uh, the Council's been very, uh, disciplined in putting aside 100,000 extra each year, so, well, this will be our fifth year putting something aside, uh, so I think we're in very, very good shape, very, very pleased, uh, and I recommend approval, this also, we have to adopt a, a GAN limit, which we're well under the GAN limit, uh, which is expenditure limit that was adopted in 1979?
What was it, 86?
86, okay, uh, and, and it's a formal calculation that we have to stay under, due tax revenues, et cetera, we're well under that, we're very frugal, uh, this Council and past councils have put us in a very good financial position, we spend within our means, and we're maintaining that, and we're still accomplishing the priorities of the Council. In closing, I'd just like to offer that, um, with, this work has been done this year much faster and, and better, this is probably the best I've worked in government for 40 years, and, uh, I would have to say that Jim and Alyssa did a budget this year and pulled it off with probably the least amount of aggravation and gray hair, ag, anything I've ever had, so, great, Jim has now got the gray hair, but, uh, but I just want to say that.
How about Alyssa?
Jim, we owe, we owe a lot to Jim and Alyssa for their pulling it together, and we really do, I, I'm very appreciative, uh, my wife was saying, you're not stressed at all this year, and I, that, you know, I, I've got two of the best tier, and they pulled together a wonderful budget, so I do want to, before we close, I wanted to thank both of them publicly for all their hard work, you, you don't see that, but basically, this is 100 some odd page document that's pulled together with no external programs, it's all done manually, and these guys pull it all together and do something there that's pretty incredible, so, um, we have obviously a very fortunate that the Council takes the time to, to give us direction early on, starting in April, that helps a lot, so we kind of get a chance to build our budget, um, but we'll be, we must, we're required by law to adopt a budget by June 30th of each year, and we are well ahead of the schedule, so I'm very pleased, so, we can answer any questions if you have any, so.
All right.
If I might, uh, so, love the, the trees in there too, which is beautiful, the, or the bushes and the plants that like it, really like it, um, but I, I did notice it started with the distinguished budget presentation award?
Yes.
Again? How many years is this?
It's 2013, I believe, and, it was funny, I said, Jim, you know, some way we're going to break it, and he looked at me, he says, not on my watch.
I just wanted to say, congratulations again, and thank you, that's fantastic.
I, I agree, okay, so, um, any, any public comment on this?
No.
Okay, do we have any questions of staff, any comments, other than I echo, um, Steve and thank both of you, um, for the hard work, and I know we all took the time to, to read it, and it's very well done, it's laid out, you know, what a solid city we are to have, not only the budget presentation award, but, uh, balanced budget and one that puts us in a very good position, um, there's a lot of cities out there that do not have that, and, uh, you know, thank you, so, um, with that, I will close the hearing, if there's no, uh, comments, and can I get a motion?
I'm going to move it.
To adopt the budget for this year.
So, for clarification, that's, there's two recommended items, the first is to adopt the resolution which, um, basically establishes salary benefits every year, and the second one is to adopt the, uh, budget and the, also includes the GAN limit adoption, et cetera, so there's, there's two required resolutions that are going to be adopted as a part of this, and that would, your motion would be adopt that as a part of it, generically just adopting a budget, you're taking two mechanical actions here.
Yes, please.
Todd, right, am I right there?
Yep, you can do them all at once, so, approve, recommend approval, staff recommendation does it.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Second, depending on.
Okay, we have a first and a second, uh, can, then let's, uh, record our votes.
Passes by a 4-0 vote.
Perfect, thank you, all right, uh, third public hearing, uh, consideration of ordinance 2021-622 to establish a comprehensive set of regulations and standards for animal waste regulations in all areas of the city, I'll open the public hearing, and can you please give the staff report?
Thank you, uh, Mayor, you'll recall that two, two months ago, we came with a first reading, and that reading had, uh, a concern that we, there was some relative to some collection of some waste that was, uh, piling up with animal waste, and we wanted to be able to have some enforcement ability, so, we came forward with a, uh, ordinance, um, and then what happened to us, we received a number, a, a, a number of animal, uh, horse owners came forward and said, look, some of the, the requirements are, uh, rather onerous, and specifically, we were requiring automated devices to control the water, uh, well, we, we met with them, and I talked to, uh, the, I talked to the mosquito and vector control district, et cetera, and we realized, what we're really trying to do is stop mosquitoes, so, there are treatments that you can put in water troughs, but it, it is, it is expensive to put in automated things that churn the water in a trough on a regular basis, so they can put stuff in there and they use this all the time, so we changed it, the wording, if you'll see, to either automated devices will be utilized, or manual treatment regularly applied for animal drinking water in troughs, so, we deal with the mosquito problem, but not in as onerous a way, uh, that it would otherwise, uh, be, and we also have the, they, they have to use chemical spray to get rid of fly control, and so, then lastly, we have, uh, the, the real point of this is they can't accumulate manure and leave it standing, uh, because that presents two problems, the, it presents a problem just of the odor and health issue, and then also potential NPDS runoff that creates a problem that would be legally a problem for the city, so, we, I, I approached back the, the respective, um, owners, and they were very appreciative that we worked with them, they, they came back and said, you know, we're good with it, uh, they had a suggestion and that we, we incorporated in there, um, and, as far as the wording, so I think we've got something that's very well accepted, this would be the first, this would be the replacement first reading, which means there'll be a second reading in July, and it would take effect 30 days thereafter, so at this point, um, we don't, have not received any opposition, we'd have been public notices, so, uh, we would recommend approval of the first reading of the proposed ordinance.
Thank you, staff, any comments? Questions?
I, I'd like to say, if you don't mind.
Not at all.
This is great, this is a really good example of our city working with its residents, and it demonstrates that we work for them, I mean, we're all part of the same community, we're all part of the same initiatives, that we're looking for the same things for the benefit of, of everybody in Villa Park, and I just want to highlight you and your staff as proponents of that, and just say thank you, um, very well done.
Thank you, any public comment on this?
No.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? Okay, but I'll close the public hearing, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a first, second, can we record our votes?
Passes by a 4-0 vote.
Thank you, all right, moving on to our consent calendar, items four through 11, uh, all items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda, any member of the city council staff or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action, uh, Council, are there any of the items from four through 11 that anyone would like to remove from the consent calendar?
Ten, please.
Item 10, okay, anything else? Okay, then can I get a motion for four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 11?
So moved.
Second.
Record our vote?
Passes by a 4-0 vote.
Okay, item 10, uh, Councilman Rossini, would you like to?
Um, just, just some concerns about some lingering projects that have gone, that are currently in progress in Villa Park, that, candidly, with all due respect to those that are undertaking them, are not doing all that they could do to get the projects done, uh, and, and people who are experienced in the industry, people who, um, are knowledgeable about what they should be doing and frankly aren't doing, and, and I'm just concerned about giving them a pass, um, if I can, um, ask staff to maybe comment on without even, without getting into specific details of the projects, how would this affect those, particular situations, because I think that there, this is a, this is a great idea, because I think there, there were some folks impacted by COVID-19, and certainly, um, the political world and, and, uh, building material costs and staffing and what have you, but there are some folks, as there are always, that take advantage of the system. But there are some folks, as there are always, that take advantage of the system.
Thank you. It's a really good point, because that's sort of a debate we had with the building official and I had. And not a debate, a good discussion, healthy with the planning. So there are two types of delays in projects. One where there's just problems. You know, you uncover something that, in the construction, that didn't appear before. And, and all of you have done projects, you know what I mean? It's, you know, next thing you know, you come across something, and the guy says, the contractor says, "Well, we found this, and this isn't going to work," et cetera. Then there's the projects that people are slow, because they are exactly what you're saying, delinquent, or- In some instances, we've had people actually overextend themselves and not be able to move on projects. These, what we're trying to do here in this instance is there are people over the last year where contractors literally didn't work for months at a time because of COVID, and were concerned about their staff. So they didn't have people working, and I can, I can cite some number of projects. The other issue that's come up, and I don't, it's very, very real, the cost of lumber in the last example, the last two months has more than tripled. So people are saying, "Time out. I took a building permit out, but I'm not going to do the project right away, because I can't afford it." The, the cost that, to build a house was maybe a hundred thousand, is now three hundred thousand. You're changing the realities of somebody wanting to do something. So that's sort of an issue. So what Bill and I have decided on a case-by-case basis, where it was legitimately caused by delays of COVID, he has the ability to grant it, all right? Where we have issues where people are delinquent because they've overextended themselves, or other issues, he's still going to come down and say, "No, we're not going to extend it." So this is a case-by-case basis, but, but there are instances where legitimately, somebody has said to us, "Look, I, I'm sorry, I pulled a permit, but I'm not going to be able to get the work done." And they're, they're very honest with us, and you feel like, okay, they're trying to work with us, and they, they, obviously, they're owners that would love to have these projects done. So that's what we're trying to do, and we're not, we're trying to stop them from having to come in and get another permit, and slow down the process or anything there, or incur extra costs, or whatever. So what we're trying to do is deal with that one category where they were legitimately impacted. Those people who are not doing their projects because they just aren't moving and they're slow, we are actually citing them and pulling them and pulling their permits and doing those things that we would normally do. So we're going to continue on that. So there's kind of a, like you say, there's a differentiation. It's not, not all eggs are equal, if you will.
Absolutely.
So we, we've tried to deal with those, because there are some legitimate issues, and there's some not so legitimate. They come in and say, "Well, you know, hey, look, I, we have one person that literally overextended themselves financially and just stopped the project." Well, then we had another person who had, got litigation. We said, "Well, litigation's not our problem. You've got to still do something there. You know, you've got to come to grips with it." So, I mean, there's those kinds of issues Bill's dealing with, our Bill Terran, our, our building official, and he and I are talking about it. But where we have the ability to address a problem that we know occurred because somebody didn't, we don't want them to be forced to come in and have to deal with the whole administrative bureaucracy. We're trying to deal with them. So that's what we're trying to do here. This is not a unilateral. This is somebody we can deal with on an application-by-application basis. So, but your point's well taken. There are people who would maybe try and take advantage of that. We, we're, we're watchful eye of that.
Thank you. One last question on this, and, and maybe it's somewhat off-topic on this, and just give me a little bit of, of latitude here. Is, does Bill have enough resources insofar as time to deal with the number of permits and applications and oversight necessary, given the significant increase in development that, that we've seen in Villa Park? Or is this something that we need to potentially augment down the road?
We have, we have the ability. What we did, as you recall, about a year ago, I got Bill the ability to get, we have contract support.
Right.
So an extra hours. So we have contract hours that we use. So for instance, now, work doesn't stop when Bill goes on vacation. I pull in a contract person to cover for us, which makes life a little easier. But, but candidly, over the last month or two, work has slowed down because of some of the construction issues and, and the products. I mean, there's not only, the, the costs are being driven up, not just because costs are being driven up, because it's just hard to get a hold of wood. People don't have it. They, you know, they're backordered and things like that on supplies. So that's kind of, so things are slowing down a little bit. There's, it's kind of a thing, but we're very sensitive to that. So we have a contract in place that would allow us, without having to bring, so we have the resources available when we need them.
Okay.
But they're not on staff, so I'm not incurring the cost no matter what.
Okay.
It's on an as-needed basis. So the council was very supportive in getting us that contract, helping us last, I believe it was a year ago, we got a contract on board.
Good deal. Thank you. Nothing further.
Any other comments or discussion? Well, I, I like this item. I agree with, with you, Councilman Rosini, but I also agree that sometimes a little grace, you know, goes a long way. But I appreciate staff making sure that no one's abusing it, so. Okay, no more comments or discussion? Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Can we record our, I'm going to read it just for, oh, we already. It was item number ten, consideration of a resolution for administrative extensions of time for building permits and entitlement applications due to the impact of COVID-19 pandemic. So I didn't read it in the beginning. I figured I'd probably better.
Passed by a four-zero vote.
Thank you. Okay, on to new business. Our first item of new business, item number twelve, is the Second Amendment to the employment contract with the city manager, and I'm going to ask our city attorney, Todd Lipton, to take over from here.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, in front of you is the Second Amendment to the city manager's employment contract, the city contracts with Mr. Franks to provide city manager services based upon review performance and prior direction from the council. It was directed that the terms be modified to raise his salary to what it was prior to the COVID pandemic. During the pandemic, he voluntarily agreed, or offered, I should say, to reduce his salary because of the uncertain financial times. The city came through that time, and now his salary would be restored. So that is reflected in this agreement. And also, the term of the agreement was extended by one year to a later expiration date. So those are the only real substantive changes. They're the only changes. And with that, I would recommend approval.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions?
I will. So I just wanted to highlight that overwhelmingly, the council was enamored or really appreciative of all the work that Mr. Franks has done, and especially the generous offer during the pandemic to reduce salary and continue to work tirelessly, and all the amazing things that you've continued to provide to the city. I know there were a, a number of constructive criticisms, which I think are always helpful. I know I'm not perfect, and can use those, those pointers on what to redirect and do things better. But all done with the thought in mind that what you're doing is, is far and above the, the best track for the city. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to say, I think we're extremely blessed to have Steve as our city manager. We honestly, if, he deserves twice as much. I'm just going to say it. I'm sorry. I, he's, he is, he is truly a scholar and a gentleman. He is, is a leader within the industry, and we are incredibly blessed and fortunate to have him as our city manager, and for our staff, a mentor, and for our residents, somebody who always has an ear for them, and will pick up the phone and call them back within minutes of a phone call. Just incredible. Thank you.
I concur. And so we have our mayor's phone calls that got moved every other week. But, so you develop these relationships, very platonic relationships with other mayors throughout Orange County, and we always compare like, whose city manager is better? And I got to say, Steve, you know, with what you, the camaraderie, the professionalism, the way staff looks up to you, the way you interact with our residents, with our law enforcement, all our other partners. A lot of times, the other mayors are like, "Your city manager does what?" And I'm like, "Yeah, doesn't yours?" "No." Or I'll say, "Hey, did you hear about such and such?" They're like, "No." "So your city manager didn't tell you?" Like, "No." So we are very fortunate, and I'm happy to, I think all of us on council were very fortunate to have you as our city manager, and, yeah, good job. So any public comment on this item? Okay, then do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Second. All right, please record your vote.
Passed us four-zero. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, this should have been on the agenda earlier, but I dropped the ball, and so I apologize that this was not on May's agenda. That was my oversight, so I apologize. I'm glad we took care of it. All right, next, item thirteen, new business. It's adopting your twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two street project list for SB one, road maintenance and rehabilitation account. Staff, could you please give the report?
Yes, thank you. Each year, under SB one, you recall, we get state money for this. That was signed in April of twenty seventeen. That affords us money to do work on the roads. Each year, we're required to work on, to show them that we can substantively meet those expenditures and move forward. Typically, we give you a full list, but because we're still working on that list for this year, we've identified one stretch of road valley, which covers from Lemon to Loma, which more than satisfies our requirement. And well, we have to meet a July first deadline to get to the state with respect to showing we can meet the funds. So since that meets our requirement, we're going to identify, we're recommending we identify that. We'll be coming back forward to the council with a list of the full streets for our next street project in the next month or two. But this is, at this point, being recommended to satisfy a requirement to ensure that we get SB one monies from the state. So we have the ability to do that and still meet their timeframe, but still be able to be deliberative in our thought and evaluation of the streets that need repair without having to rush through a list and not giving the council time to really adequately look at the list. So this is, this, I think, accomplishes it, our mandated requirement, but in a prudent way that allows the council time to work with us and identify the streets we really want to do with the rest of our project.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Was there any public comment on this item?
No.
No further discussion? Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Record your vote, please.
Passed us by a vote of four-zero.
Thank you. Item number fourteen of new business is our, the Villa Park Local Hazard Mitigation Plan Adoption. Steve, could you please give the staff report?
Thank you. We're required by FEMA to get, in, in other words, to get monies from the feds. You're required to have a hazard mitigation plan. So we've worked on this for several years, well, a year or so, I guess, several years. Anyway, we use a consultant to help pull this together. You'll recall that we, the council approved several months back a draft and allowed for circulation of that. We had to circulate to all the respective agencies. I believe we circulated to fire, state, fire, et cetera, and numbers of other agencies that have a chance to review it. We've now completed the review, all the, the final draft plan was approved by the California Office of Emergency Service, CAL OES. So we've met all of our requirements, and now we're approving this, recommending approval. What that would do is allow us to ensure that we can get federal monies and meet their state requirements, et cetera. So this meets and has been reviewed, has had public scrutiny, and we have checked all of the boxes that we need to. And now we're recommending that the council take final action to approve.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments? Any public comment on this?
No.
No further discussion? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Can we record our vote?
I passed this four-zero.
And it's quite a lengthy document, so, thank you.
All right.
All right.
That Akram? Akram is our technically challenged engineer who is working on Zoom in case we needed questions.
Did you just say technically challenged engineer?
Hi, Akram.
Hi, Akram.
He will appreciate, if you know Akram, that to know that is a true statement.
Okay.
Always coming in saying there's a computer error, and Kim and Alyssa always saying it's user error.
All right, so our last item in new business is the approval agreement with the Orange County Transportation Authority for the Senior Mobility Program. Can you please give the staff report?
Thank you. In two thousand and one, the OCTA established what they call the Senior Mobility Program, which is basically monies that they get from Measure M two, one percent of Measure M two, that are allocated to each of the cities to, the thirty-two cities, I guess, there are two cities that don't participate, and they do their own thing, to support local transportation services. And they, we have to provide a twenty percent match. This is a very small dollar amount. I, I think Jim can answer the question, how much that is. But it's a very small dollar amount, but we use basically this to provide seniors to get non-emergency medical trips, or whatever they might need. There used to be a requirement that we had a five-dollar deposit that they had to put on. I think we waived that, so no longer. Residents need to do it. They register. It's a really nice feature. We have, we have a hundred, probably a hundred, a hundred seniors that have the potential to use this service. And tip, we've actually had people who registered them, who are like children or whatever, who register their parents, and they don't live, the, the children don't live in the area, but they know they can get their parents the medical trips, or whatever the case may be. This is non-emergent medical transportation, so it's not ambulance. These are like doctors, or dialysis, or going to get prescriptions, or whatever. There's a twenty-mile radius that they can travel, I believe. So there's those stipulations. But basically, OCTA, and the residents have to be over sixty. That's the only requirement. It's over sixty. And the, the whole point is to try and get people still to be able to stay, be home, and not be forced into difficult situations, I think, where it, it's an imposition and really hard for people to make appointments and things like that. Anyway, so they are eight, limited to a number of trips per, each month. Their travel can only be twenty-five miles one way, if they can, you know, and so they get that. They have to schedule their own trips, so we register them. They, we then get a report, we, a report from OCTA and our company that does it. We contract with Yellow Cab to do the services for us, so it's not like OCTA does it. But it's a very useful, neat thing, and we advertise it on the feeder each month. If anyone's interested, they can sign up, and we get them registered, and then they just call and need it as they, use it as they need it. So this is a cooperative agreement between us and OCTA to allow us to get the OCTA monies, the Measure two, Measure M two monies, for our share of it, which is basically eighty percent of the funding. We, and I don't know how much it is. Maybe, Jim, you can-
It runs ten to twelve thousand dollars a year. So I, I will basically go ahead, the last couple of years, and with COVID pandemic, it has decreased basic usage, and we have made some, take some steps to basically get it out there in the community, because we do indeed to get that money back up, or that usage back up. Otherwise, we have to turn around and return the funds to OCTA. So anybody you're talking to, go ahead and let them know about the program.
Yeah.
So I agree. There wasn't, we realized that the five dollars was a little bit of a deterrent at one point, so we took that away from it, and I think that was a suggestion that we heard from some of the residents. And again, I think we're, we're monitoring closely, but if, we encourage people to use it. This is money that's given to us, and it's a service that's, you know, having a, somebody, I have my mother at the scene. I know the situation of elderly mother. It's nice to be able to count on somebody else to get her to appointments sometimes without having to rush out, and I know some of you are in the same boat. We're just being able to have somebody take care of an appointment like that's really nice. So we, we think it's a great service, and it's a little bit underutilized, like, like Jim is saying, in Villa Park right now. And that's probably because of COVID, people were staying in, and they were doing televisits for medical trips as opposed to, but I think we'll, we'll push back up a little bit. Anyway, we'd recommend approval.
Thank you. Any comments? I think this is a great program. As the representative on the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, having that transportation for some of the seniors, especially the ones that live alone, is extremely important. And I know it's been pushed out on the feeder, and I've been putting it on my social media, but we, now that COVID's more manageable, I don't want to jinx it. I don't know what we want to say, but now that things are opening up more, hopefully, we get some more use out of it. But these seniors definitely need to have that interaction, even if it's the ten-minute car ride over. So I'm very appreciative of this program. Any public comment on this?
No.
Okay, no discussion, and do I have a motion?
Second.
Record your vote, please.
Passed us four-zero.
Thank you. All right, city manager report.
Thank you. This, there's a, as item number sixteen, you'll see, is a, is a grid with the normal list of projects. What a couple of things I wanted to highlight. One, on June fifteenth, the, the county sort of opened up. You'll notice that. And what that means is we have everybody to die us, which is nice, and we've been able to use the features of this room a little bit, go back to the voting, et cetera. The other thing you'll notice, and I, I want to make aware in people, we are now, as of, we've started testing it, but I think as of July first, we'll be fully opening the council chambers for rental use with a new rate schedule. But we have had the Rotary and our AA groups in here in the last couple of weeks, last couple of days, and it's worked out really, really well. Just so you know, we brought on a, a cleaning group that cleans every day, midday, just to help us make sure that we get a little bit extra cleaning in here and then there. But it's worked out real well. Rotary was in here last week, and they were all smiles to have, be in here and, and do their thing. So I know they were very appreciative. The AA group is very appreciative, and we've already had sort of phone calls. It's been a run on the market to try and get in, but it's a nice feature. Secondly, I wanted to mention that Jim, like I said, I'm really fortunate we have Jim here, because we were no sooner finishing the budget on- because we were no sooner finishing the budget on June 23, which is tomorrow. We have requirements to submit a number of forms to the state in order to get federal money, which is sort of ironic that the state requires us to submit forms to the state to get federal money. But so be it. We'll do it. And we, and Jim had already taken those forms and got them all done. We submitted on time. But that's the ARPA money that we talked, we'll be getting $1.4 million. What our plan is that, that's not included in our budget because the guidelines haven't, final issuance of what's allowable guidelines have not even been issued. It's important to know that those funds have to be, have to be planned for spending by, you have to encumber them or contract for them by 2024, but you don't have to fully spend them out till 2026. So it's not like we're in a rush to spend them. We'll be getting them in increments, 50% increment. And it's a one-point, just, we're getting slightly more than we thought. We were going to get 1.1 million. We're going to get 1.4 million. And it's, we're going through the guidelines right now. And it's a little bit onerous for cities that have been able to be frugal and not get as impacted by COVID. So we are having a little bit of, we're going to have a little bit more of a challenge to work through. But, so we didn't include anything in the budget, but it's our plan to come back sometime in the next 30 to 60 days with a plan, with a public, so we can do a public hearing, and we can have the council weigh in and sort of work through what their planned spending is. This is not a rush to spend. This is a rush to have, I mean, this is, in my mind, it's, we want to see something deliberate that's going to help us last and get some lasting impact for the city and, and all the residents benefit. So we want to have something that's really going to be, we've talked a little bit about this, but really going to be a benefit that the residents can say, well, that's good. We, we don't often get gifted this kind of money, and I say gifted because we didn't lose any revenue during the COVID or very little if we did. We didn't have very much extra expenditure. We did get some, we did get CARES money that covered a lot of that. So we're, we're financially, we're not hurting. So the 1.4 is a, is a really nice type of thing for us. So I want to share that with you. But like I said, Jim, we've done the paper. We've got acknowledgement from the state that we submitted everything on time. So we'll be coming this summer, and I will probably be talking to you a little bit. But I think one of the things that's important is that we do a public hearing. So if residents have ideas about how we can do it, we should have the opportunity for the residents to weigh in a little bit. There are some restrictions, obviously, that we have. The other thing is, there is another tranche of money that appears to be coming our way that will be for infrastructure money, that they're being negotiating right now, and you're probably hearing about that in Washington, DC. We'll be eligible for that. That will be money that we can and probably, I'm going to recommend we strongly put toward our streets and our roads because that's exactly what it's intended for. And we'll be, we'll be eligible for that kind of money. So this money is not, the ARPA money is not intended for infrastructure. It's intended for weird sort of categories, and it's kind of, as, you know, you kind of have to be creative in how we apply it toward us. But we'll, we'll come up with a way, and I think it's something that I'm, I'm looking for an opportunity to have some public weigh in, and you guys have some time. And the good thing about it is you don't have to spend it today or tomorrow. We have to figure out how to spend it by 2024. And I think we can all figure out in the next couple of years how we want to do something like that. So we're not, we're not locked in. But again, my recommendation is we do something that has a lasting impact. Not a one, you know, but it's got to be a one-time because you're not going to have this money over and over. So you don't really necessarily want to start something that you can't continue. But that's, that's the big, the big news there. And I think we are frequently getting a question, and I kind of want the council to weigh in a little bit about it and if, on your own. But we did issue temporary variances to allow people to eat out. If you recall, the tents out of Rockwell's, et cetera. Many cities, and you, the mayor can tell you this, are leaving those opportunities up for a while because we really don't know what the fall is going to bring and, you know, where we might be. I'm not in a particular rush. I haven't received any complaints, and we're not in a rush to close them down and tell them to move the tents down or whatever. But I say, you know, I'm certainly open to if council has input or thoughts or whatever, let, please give me a call at your convenience. And I think the mayor can tell you, some of it, like Orange is going to leave that up possibly permanent in downtown, their downtown circle. So, and some of the cities are saying, people like it so much. It's, people like eating outside. It gives a different ambiance. So an mayor can comment on how, what the mayors are talking about. That's something you're hearing. That is something I never expected to kind of hear that, you know, that. But I am, so you know, I'm getting questions from residents. When are we taking the tents down? I'm not in a hurry to take them down because I just don't know. If we do get a resurgence or something, you just don't know what's, this has sort of been an unpredictable year. We never thought we'd be where we are now. So that's, that's sort of, I'll leave it there. If you, if the council members want to get to me at their own or even give me comments now, that's fine. We don't, we don't have to take action, but whatever. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any comments? Anybody? All right. Well, thank you for the report. All right. Now we're going to move on to our council member meeting attendance reports. So we don't have anything from the library. I know that Shawna laughed, but do we have any kind of report from?
So the friends of the library met and talked to, they actually interviewed the new librarian. Are going to put out a newsletter that details what the new librarian is like, and seems like that should be all positive. And her connection to the city is longstanding, and hopefully, we'll see her in here to give reports.
Okay.
She, the new librarian, just so you know, is an alumni of Villa Park High School.
Yeah.
And she's very pleased to come back here and be part of the community.
Exciting. Okay. Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control, that's me. So we had two meetings on one day. We had a joint meeting with the Budget and Finance Committee, joined with the Policy and Personnel Committee. And if you guys remember, we had, the Vector Control had discussed about purchasing a building, relocating. That did fall through. And so this joint committee, I'm the chair of the Budget and Finance, and decided not to be the chair of the joint one. So the chair discussed some of the options of staying in Garden Grove and maybe redesigning the current location, what that would look like, how long it would take, and just opened it up for some comments. So nothing voted on, nothing that was concrete, just more of that we're going back to the drawing board and seeing if they're still interested in purchasing a building or renovating the current location that they're at. So that was that. And then we had a general meeting of the entire Board of Trustees with a lot of information. They had passed the budget prior, so that was done. This one in particular, there were three things that were discussed. One was some West Nile virus action and some cities that are heavily, unfortunately, impacted by West Nile virus, which I'll go over. The other one is a new, well, not so much new. It will be new to Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control, but there's some jurisdictions in Florida, and I believe Louisiana, that use this sterile insect technique, which I'll touch on that. And then finally, discussion, one of the hotspots for the West Nile virus is La Habra, the city of La Habra. So they went over kind of this widespread spraying process. So I'll go over those. So the first one, to give some data, there are, in 2020, there were 19 West Nile virus infections with one death. But back in 2014, there was a big epidemic of West Nile virus cases, and there were 741 West Nile virus infections with 33 deaths. So what Vector Control has been doing since then is focusing on that prevention side. That's when they started doing all the marketing with the tiptoss, take action, along with some of these new techniques that I'll talk to you about, and then this widespread anti, anti-larva spray. So there are nine high-risk cities in Orange County. Fortunately, Villa Park is not one of them. Santa Ana, Anaheim, Orange, Fullerton, Garden Grove, Huntington Beach, Tustin, La Habra, and Buena Park have all been determined to have high risk for West Nile virus positive mosquitoes. So what they've been doing to prevent this new, or a repeat of 2014, is a big push on prevention and then emergency planning and then the epidemic response. So, so far, knock on wood, the prevention has done very well. And that leads us into the sterile insect technique. And the sterile insect technique, there are three, I have to read my notes. There are three different methods of sterile insect technique. Some are, like I said, used widely elsewhere, but the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control is looking into possibly utilizing one of these three techniques. Each one comes with its own advantages and disadvantages. Some are very expensive, so they're looking at maybe possibly partnering with some neighboring jurisdictions. But the first one is a radiation technique where they irradiate the pupae of the, the mosquitoes, and it causes the males to be sterile. And they just radiate them with gamma rays and X-rays, and it's a mass. They produce the larvae, and they have a ton of larvae. They irradiate them. They let them develop, and then they release them out into the wild. It's not harmful to humans. The machine that, it's like an X-ray machine. So the tech, you know, any tech that would do it would just wear the normal, it'd be the same thing like if you were to go get an X-ray or something, where you would just wear the, the protective gear and stand behind the protective wall, and you irradiate these larvae. And then those males become sterile, and they go off and mate with females. And then the, the females never lay the eggs. So that one's not very expensive, but you have to do it constantly. So the half-life is quite short. The other one is Wolbachia, which is a bacteria that gets injected into the male pupae. And Wolbachia is a bacteria that is found in a lot of different organisms, you know, from single-celled, well, it is single-celled, from like insects all the way up to reptiles. It's not harmful to anybody, but what it does do is it causes the male's larvae not to survive. So you don't have any males that can mate with the females. And just in case I didn't mention it, the females for these 80s are the ones that actually bite. The males don't bite. It's the females. So you want to target the females and make sure the females are the ones that can't reproduce more females. The third one, which is a little interesting to me, more so than the others, is to genetically modify gene therapy. And so what you do is you put a modified gene in there that also has some sort of fluorescent capability, which is going to allow you to monitor the half-lives, if you will, of the offspring. And so this genetically modified gene, again, you put it into the, into the males, and it makes them sterile, and they mate with the wild females, produce offspring, produce males, but they produce sterile males. And those sterile males go off and mate with females. And so that can actually have up to 10 generations, but it's very expensive. But it's much more effective than the other two techniques. So they're looking at cost analysis and seeing what other jurisdictions they would use. But, but any one of these three would be excellent because the whole idea is that you don't want to be able to have any wild-type females that can produce baby mosquitoes. So those are the three that they're discussing, and probably get a lot more information on that. And probably, if they do choose one, it would probably be another year or two years before it actually ends up becoming some sort of technique that gets used.
Any way we could get that done next week?
Right?
I'm a frequent victim.
Yes. And then, and we can put this on the, it's a whole presentation too, so we can put it on the website or get the link to everybody. And then La Habra, unfortunately, has a very dense population of these West Nile viruses. So they are planning on doing a mass spraying of adulticide and larvicide. And they, Vector Control has two trucks, heavy-duty supercab with these big things on the back. And so they're going to do kind of a double whammy where they go through and they, and it's, it's a mist. They do it at 2:00 in the morning. It kind of ends up getting like a little white dusting that doesn't hurt anything, doesn't hurt the plants, doesn't hurt pets, doesn't hurt birds. It just hurts the mosquitoes. And so they go through the first round with the larvicide, and then they do the adulticide. So, and that's coming up soon. And that's it for Mosquito and Vector Control. That's a lot. Yes, questions?
Okay. So you said something that confused me, and so I, maybe I just didn't get it right. But you said they sterilize the males who then go back and mate with the females, and they have offspring. But if they're sterile, how are they having offspring?
Well, for which technique? For the radiation?
Gene therapy is what you were, is when you were talking about that.
So the females end up being sterile. The males aren't sterile. The gene therapy, you target the males. You put in this gene. When they mate with the females, the females are the ones that can't reproduce. So you're trying to cut down on the females because the females are the ones that bite.
So wouldn't that eliminate it in one generation? Why is that a multi-generation? I get, maybe I missed that.
Because you're not going to be, you're not going to mate with every female. So then the offspring, so then the males that survive will still carry that gene, and that male will then go mate with other females that maybe didn't find a mate.
Okay.
And then they, and then they can go through for 10 generations.
Okay.
I can send you the presentation.
I'll have to look at it because that.
It's interesting. It is interesting. Okay. Orange County Sanitation District.
That's me. So, sorry, were there other, I, we jumped, but there weren't any other questions, right?
Spend the money on the mosquitoes. Let's get rid of the mosquitoes.
So met twice with OC sanitation for our general meeting on May 26 and our operations meeting on June 2. There wasn't anything specific to Villa Park in these meetings, but I will highlight that we authorized $230 million in contracts in the general meeting relating to three different projects. One is a subtrunk, the Orange Western Subtrunk and the Los Alamos Trunk Sewer Project. Consists of trunk sewers within Anaheim, Cypress, Buena Park, Los Alamos, and Seal Beach. The second project is the construction of four new primary clarifiers, a new order control and chemical facility, and a new electrical distribution center. And then the last project is the Headquarters Complex Project, which is intended to provide adequate space for all Plant Number One staff and fountain pally. There were, in the operations committee, we talked about the project that I think I've mentioned previously over on meets. That is still in the works. The budget was originally approved, and we're looking for final dates on that. And then the last thing I wanted to highlight was that we had Orange County Sanitation Board turnover and leadership, and we now have John Withers of Irvine Ranch Water District and Chad Wonkey of Placentia take Board Chair and Vice Chair, respectively. And that is my report. Any questions?
No. Thank you. Orange County Fire Authority.
That's me. On May 27, I attended the last Orange County Fire Authority meeting. And just a couple of highlights from the meeting and some current events going on. We have delayed passing of the budget at the past meeting, and in a contested vote, 11 to 10, we decided to examine a few features of how we're spending money, what we're spending money on, and the nuances that make up the OFA. And obviously, with that many politicians in one, in one room and one board, things can get interesting. So it's all for the betterment of, obviously, the residents that we serve, but just some different opinions on that. So hopefully, we'll get some clarity and get a budget passed as I believe we're required by the end of this month. So, and it's coming on Thursday. So correct me if I'm wrong.
I think you could either do a continuing resolution or you can adopt.
Okay. I have.
Well, they're a JPA, so I think they can pretty much do whatever they want. They still have to have appropriations. Well, yeah, timing-wise, yeah. I don't think there's a.
I have good, I have good confidence that we're going to, we'll get something passed this Thursday. So. Of note for discussion, the Orange County Drowning Prevention Task Force report was provided. And in a unanimous vote, which rarely happens with the Fire Authority Board, 21 to 0, the Board approved an annual donation of $25,000 to the Orange County Drowning Prevention Task Force with an OFA community educator to attend task force meetings and OFA to collaborate on annual county-wide campaigns. Tragically, we've seen drownings occur even within our own community. It's one of the leading causes of death for. within our own community. It's one of the leading causes of death for young ones, and obviously, as the weather gets warmer, we all have to have a heightened sense of vigilance. And anything that the OCFA and the elected officials can do to spread the word, educate people, and prevent this tragedy, we want to be a part of, and I think that's unanimous. Let's see here. The review of purchasing ordinance and purchasing provisions, roles, responsibilities, authorities, and matrix on a motion of Director Bartlett and seconded by Director Quo, we chose to delete the special procurement authorization and take review of the procurement process to the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. This is just in an effort to make sure that we're doing all that we can to be as transparent, as transparent as possible, and put things out to bid when and where, and in all cases where we should, where it makes sense to do so. Not that anything untoward is going on, but just trying to make sure that as responsible leaders within our community, we're doing everything we can to make sure that things are on the up and up. Let's see here. Oh, Quick Reaction Force. Thank you, Chief Hunter, again, for reminding me about the QRF. On June 14th, the OCFA held a media event and announced the activation of the Quick Reaction Force QRF Pilot Program. This is a pilot program made possible by a generous donation from Southern California Edison of approximately $9 million. The funding will provide ability for the OCFA to lease and operate two CH-46 helicopters. They're the twin rotor helicopters that we've often seen carry our U.S. Marines and Special Forces folks overseas. These helicopters have a tremendous ability to put down 10 times the normal level, or amount, I should say, of water or fire retardant in a single drop. Your typical helicopter is roughly 300 gallons. These things put out 3,000 gallons. I've said it before, I'm going to say it again. I think it's a program well worth the investment. The program includes Los Angeles and Ventura Counties, obviously, as well as Orange County, and these three counties will work collaboratively to share these helicopters across SCE service territory, which includes much of Southern California. Obviously, the utilities have received a lot of negative publicity due to fires up and down the state of California. And without getting into legally sensitive areas, for them, it is a wise investment on their part, and something that I think our communities are going to greatly benefit from it, and I'm thankful for that opportunity. I believe that's all I have. We have a meeting this Thursday, and look forward to it, and look forward to hopefully getting back in person to the boards. But it's actually been very convenient for me personally to be able to teleconference to some of these, given all the demands upon my time. And I could not attend that media event, and you probably wouldn't want me there anyways. There's enough politicians there, because I was working. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Orange County Library Advisory. I know you kind of gave a brief, but.
The Library Advisory Board did not meet, so I do not have a meeting report.
Law Enforcement Advisory.
No meeting.
All right. Villa Park Community Services Foundation. I, I think Robbie was out of town or traveling, so I stepped up and went, I'm the liaison when he's not available. And the two items that were discussed, I want to make sure I get the dates right. First would be the Fourth of July Stars on Parade that Steve Franks mentioned earlier. Starts on July 4th, the morning of, at 9:00 a.m. And this is like what we used to do. Unfortunately, we didn't get it last year, but decorate the bikes and your dogs and your kids. And we have a little parade through the city Villa Park. The path has changed a little bit, the parade route. So we can put this on the website. Do you have a copy? I think you do.
Yeah, the.
The route?
Which route do you have?
The one that they line up at Villa Park High School. They go down Nichols.
Yeah, we have that.
Right on Serrano, right on Lemon, right on Dracotell, right on Center, and then left on Taft. So Jill, Kuli, and Forrest are the ones that are cheering that this year, and hope everyone can attend. And I think if you want to do your car, you have to wait till the very end and go in the very back. But I know I'll be there in the morning and see everyone off, and it's a lot of fun. It's a great community event. Dress up your bikes, and, you know, you can walk, ride your bike, wear a helmet, please. And I believe the sheriff is providing the traffic control, and then we get OCFA with our fire engine. So that'll be, that'll be exciting. Definitely looking forward to that. And then there is discussion. I'm not sure if it's completely set in stone yet. We have a meeting tomorrow. But they're planning a concert in the park at the Villa Park High School Amphitheater for July 23rd, I believe. So we'll find out tomorrow if that is actually going to happen. And that's it. So Housing Legislative Committee, there was no meeting. Bridges at Kramer Place Advisory, the meeting's actually tomorrow. And the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, there was no meeting. We have dark in June. But I will say, so there was a special ad hoc meeting or group committee that was put together, and somehow my name got on it. And it was to help guide the executive committee of the Senior Citizen Advisory Council to report to the Office on Aging. We were tasked with being able to identify and supplement the master plans, general, general master plan items of aging and the digital divide. So from some of our other meetings, I reported about how COVID kind of accelerated and accentuated this isolation that a lot of the seniors had experienced. Anyways, being seniors or living alone, and then when you throw COVID on top of it, it really exacerbated this problem of this isolation. And when we had the Athena app, and they had used kind of our seniors to be the guinea pigs on how to navigate through this system of having to go online and, you know, register for your COVID vaccine, and a lot of the seniors became very apparent about this really strong digital divide. And again, everyone's supposed to be isolating and quarantining. So we were tasked with coming up with somehow, some way of how can we bridge that digital divide. And there's a group of five of us from broad, wide range. And we did come up with some suggestions. It's getting presented to the executive committee that then will report to the Office of Aging and the Board of Supervisors. And what we decided is, you know, we ask big. So there are some programs that, with some of the money that the state is giving, to request for our seniors in Orange County, a one-to-one iPad program, where there is an iPad that comes already with data. And all the programs, I think I had mentioned one, Let's Go, I think was one of the ones that I had talked about, where they're all online, and you can sign up for classes, you could, and you have to be senior, you can sign up for classes, you can go see a museum tour, you can take a cooking class, you can, and these seniors would go on these online programs and meet these friends, and they could be in some other state, some other country, doesn't matter. But it allowed them to have this connectivity. And so Meredith Chalimi, who is the chair of the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee for Health and Nutrition, she's the one that found this program. And it's quite expensive, but we are requesting these iPads with this data already, because even if you gave them iPads, some of these seniors don't have access to Wi-Fi. So these iPads come with the Wi-Fi, and some of these programs are already loaded, and they'd be available to seniors. So that's something that we kind of had to put together really fast, and it's getting presented to the Office of Aging, I believe, on Friday. So I'll keep you updated on that. But that would be great for seniors, because then each city could get allocated a certain number of these iPads, and the seniors then would get them free of charge and be able to have that connectivity, or telehealth, or whatever was needed to help bridge that, that digital divide and make the isolation less noticeable. So we'll keep you posted on that. I was really honored and humbled to be put on that committee. So, but otherwise, we, there's no meeting in June. But, okay. Did I? Sorry. No meeting for City Schools. I apologize. All right. And so now we'll hear from. Individual council members.
Yeah, I've got an item. Yeah, on May 11th, the city had a public hearing, and we, I'll speak into it. On May 11th, the city had a public hearing regarding our housing element update, and we added an item to our draft housing element update, and that was to include the Smith Basin as an area to rezone to help in part to meet some of the arena allocation. Anyway, on June 3rd, the Orange County, at the Orange County Water District offices, the San Ana River Flood Protection Agency had a meeting to hear a presentation by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers on the next phase, and I think this is the last phase, the San Ana River Main Stem Project. This project has been going on for probably 30 years and resulted in already a number of improvements, all the way from Entone down the San Ana River, including raising Prado Dam, putting concrete channels on the San Ana River all the way down to the ocean. Now they're working on the Santiago Creek. And that will include the Smith Basin. Smith, the Santiago Creek flows right through the Smith Basin and under Villa Park Road into the two larger basins that you see on the south side of Villa Park Road. So anyway, there, what the, in this, the presentations by the Army Corps of Engineers, who's heading up the project, the Orange County Flood Control District also was participating by Zoom, and the Orange County Water District was there as well, because they own the Smith Basin. So the, the only action that was identified for the Smith Basin will be addressing the steep slopes. That's the only thing that the Army Corps of Engineers is looking to do at this point. They also indicated that there will be no habitat mitigation areas in the Smith Basin. All of the habitat mitigation will be taken care of in the larger basins on the south side of Villa Park Road. The plan is for construction to begin in 2022, which is just a couple of years away, and will be completed in 2026. Herb Nakasone, who's the executive director of the San Ana River Flood Protection Agency, commented that the city's proposal to rezone the Smith Basin was timely, so that this could be factored into the final design of the, this phase of the San Ana River Main Stem Project. So I guess to sum it all up, it's all good news for, you know, potential rezoning of the Smith Basin to help us to meet our housing, housing needs. So just wanted to share that with the council and the community.
Thank you. Okay. Yes.
So I also was at that, the June 2nd meeting via mobile, being able to teleconference. And I took something slightly different away from that meeting. My one takeaway was that it looked like the Smith Basin was part of the 100-year plan for runoff mitigation, and that removal of that Smith Basin or filling it in might impact their mitigation plan, and therefore would be an impediment to any sort of development there. I did have some further discussions on that, and we'll need to follow up. I think that might be a concern.
Anything else? Councilman Rossini?
Good to see everybody back up here on the dais. Good to see the world getting back to normal. Whether you get vaccinated or not, your choice. Follow the data always. Be smart, be safe, take care of each other. This year, I should say, this country, our world, has been through a lot in the last year and a half. It's taught a lot of us invaluable lessons about what's important and what's not. I hope we don't forget, and I hope we hold those that are likely to have created this issue accountable. There's just a lot of suffering that was, in my opinion, needless. And I'm so very thankful to see the kids out playing again, and our community getting together again, and look forward to the Fourth of July. And I'd like to thank all the parents and the coaches in Villa Park Little League for stepping up tirelessly, getting sunburnt, tolerating us annoying parents. And, you know, kids keep bugging us, because us old dads need to get out and play a ball, too. That's all I got. Thanks.
Okay. And then I'm going to say a couple things. One, the sixth virtual coffee with the mayor, which soon we don't have to do virtual anymore, is scheduled for July 13th at Zoom right now at 9:30. I'm hoping that the seventh will be real, in person, where we can pick a spot and meet there. This is a great opportunity. We've had attendance at all of them, which, shocking, I know, but it's been great. And we've had residents come, and some have questions, some just want to meet and see what's going on. And it's a, it's a great way to connect and meet your neighbors. You know, people have been on there that didn't realize that they lived right around the corner, met a new person that is doing some construction at the house. He doesn't live here yet, but he actually lives, is going to live, kind of catty-corner. So that was nice. So that's going to be July 13th at 9:30 a.m. The link is on the website. And then I wanted to promote, along with the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, in working with the Director of Orange County Community Services, Rene Ramirez, she had mentioned about, we were trying to talk about how we can do more for veterans here in the city of Villa Park. And so we were kind of brainstorming, and she had mentioned that they, they, the county, have pens to recognize vets. So we got together with Steve, and we were able to start the Villa Park Veteran Pen Program. So it's a pen, it's a city pen, and it actually says Villa Park Veteran on it. And these are available to any Villa Park resident veteran who would like one, and we'd love for them to come in and get one, and we'd love to take a picture. And you can wear it proudly as recognized as one of our Villa Park veterans. So really excited about that. And then I wanted to say congratulations to the Villa Park High School Girls' Softball Team for making it all the way to CIF. And I know there are other teams that made CIF or first rounds, whatever, but they were actually in the final, and I was not able to be at the game, but apparently it was a very good game. They did end up losing, but only by a walk-off homerun. I think it was 0-0 all the way through the ninth and in the extra inning. The opposing team hit a homerun. So congratulations to those girls and those families. I know they worked hard to get there. And with that, I think.
Before you go, I just want to mention that we have, the pitcher on that team was named the Gatorade Player of the Year for California in softball, which is.
Sydney Summer Dyke.
And she is a Villa Park resident, and her father is, has a practice right there on Wanda and Villa Park Road. So just, it's kind of nice to see that somebody was that successful. And she's a junior and committed to Arizona already, so.
Yep. And we have three Villa Park varsity baseball players who were out in Arizona for JOs, and their team won the entire thing. So, you know, congratulations to them as well. So Villa Park's being represented well everywhere. So if there's nothing else, then I will adjourn the city council meeting and thank everyone for coming. And we are adjourned Jan, January, June 22nd at 8:20 p.m. Everyone have a happy Fourth, and thank you.